Good morning, everyone. Good morning. We'd like to welcome you to the study session for the Mesa City Council for the morning of Thursday, January 11th. All of our council members are here and present for this meeting. Item 1A on our agenda is a presentation on a study for redevelopment of property adjacent to the Art Center at 51 through 55 East Main Street. Mr. McVeigh and Ben, thank you for being here. Thank you for wearing multiple hats around here.
I try.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation, and with me today I have Ben Ayers with Gensler, who helped us prepare a feasibility and concept study for the redevelopment of 51, 55 through 55 East Main Street. To give you a little bit of context, we consider this to be one of the most prime pieces of property in the downtown, particularly of those that the city owns. Directly located on the Art Center campus, on the north end of the Art Center campus, it makes a direct connection through the plaza to the MIC Center and the city plaza space in general. It also is in close proximity to multiple redevelopment sites such as Melody on Main, Eco Mesa, and the grid. We really think that this is an opportunity. The reason that we went through this effort is that we really think this is an opportunity for the city to lead the next phase in our innovations district development. It's been a pretty interesting process, and we're really excited about the direction that we think we're going with this concept. And I'm going to give Ben a few minutes here to kind of walk you through how we prepared the feasibility study, and then we'll get into the concept and how we'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Jeff. Again, well, thank you for having me here this morning to talk through this. Really, kind of just high level, I'll start off kind of where we were. I won't dive too deeply into everything, but happy to answer questions that Mayor and Council, any of you have. Really, we started with an understanding of the feasibility of the site. And so, the biggest driver for that was really the parking analysis that was kind of already being done with downtown Mesa. We worked with staff and Jeff, of course, to be able to help through and understand that. Next, we kind of jumped into the zoning and looked really what was going on there, and it allowed us to build out several different types of uses and providing kind of maximum allowable buildings that could go on the site. And you can see this is just one piece of that. You're just seeing a quick slide that, at the time, we were still working through what the program would be, right? And that comes different characteristics, different drivers from a parking or different uses. And so, we were trying to understand what the maximum uses could be. And so, with this slide, you're kind of starting to see some of those studies as they came out. The next one. And so, then that led into...
I'm sorry, Ben. I have a question.
I'm going to interrupt the whole time, so just keep an eye on me.
Please.
So, I see that the hotel is mentioned here nowhere else in the presentation. Is that a consideration, or are you just looking at any wild idea that could come about?
From the onset, thank you for the question. That's a good one. We, as, we work with Jeff and staff and truly understanding the initial three uses that were studied was an office use, which really that kind of takes into almost any commercial consideration, where there was higher education, office use, those types of things. Residential and hotel were the two others that were identified early on from meetings with staff. We talked about others, but these were the three primary starting points because they really gave us the whole kind of gambit when it came to kind of a parking analysis. And so, we started there. Early on, after discussion, and you'll see a little bit more in the conversation as I get into a little bit later, we started to identify specifically more uses, and the hotel started to kind of go away a little bit. And so, that was per direction with staff and kind of through the conversations that we had as well.
We wanted to throw everything possible at the beginning.
And let Ben run through the analysis and then kind of let...
See if it sticks.
Yeah, which kind of fell out best.
And if I may, as we get later into the presentation, you're going to see some of the very innovative concepts that we're putting together and how this building would actually be constructed. So, while hotel may not be in the programmatic slides later on, the ability for this building to live and support hotel is possible. So, having that as part of the feasibility and making sure that the parking, in the end, that the parking can support it, it was important.
Yes, absolutely. So, in this slide, what you're seeing is kind of, as we started to get a little bit of that, Councilmember Duff, perfect example, as we started to understand the program a little bit more, we started to look at, you know, what made sense. And so, there was a lot of factors that went into this. Parking, obviously, was the main driver. But looking at typical development standards, you know, the things that developers will be looking for, for example, the economic conditions, as well as the aesthetics, understanding when you look at that site, what makes sense. A 16-story tower didn't really make sense when you look at that compared to what else was going on in that area. So, there was an aesthetic also to it. Although, as you see in the bottom left of the slide, the parking was the main driver. And so, where we ended up kind of settling and the next, let's jump to the slide, next slide. One of the things that kind of came out of a conversation, I remember this really well, we were sitting in Chris's office, kind of talking through this, and one of the things you hear a lot about right now is flexible buildings. There's a lot of conversation with this office-to-residential kind of transition adaptive reuse. A lot of times, and maybe some of you have been even involved in those types of conversations, those types of adaptive reuse are not quite as easy or cost-effective as people seem to think they are. There's a lot that goes into those type of buildings. But we had some advantages on this site that allowed us to look at that, and we kind of posed the question and had this idea, what if we were to design a building from the start that had the flexibility built into it? And that was one of the things that kind of developed kind of a concept for us and an idea to move forward with. And something that everybody seemed to be really excited about was how to do that. And how do you start to set up this site for a potential development design team to be able to come in and provide that? So, with that, there came into part of the conversation and study were certain critical design features that we realized became part of that conversation. You can jump to the next one. And so, at this point, what you can kind of see and what we talked about was there were certain characteristics that come with each type of those, and you saw that on the last slide, there are certain things. So, as an example, on an office use, a building wants to kind of maximize your envelope. You want to push it all the way out. They want maximum leasable space to be able to go out and provide flexibility to different users of that from an office space. So, what I kind of refer to as a taut envelope, you're going out as far as you can. With the residential uses, amenities become a certain part of that conversation, and how you amenitize and service the building, more importantly, became different. Because the way the MEP systems, for example, are set up on those two buildings is very different. When you have an office building, it's usually kind of a centralized, and it goes out, and you don't have anywhere near the number of controlled areas where you're controlling your HVAC, for example, right? It's metered pretty much on a floor-by-floor basis, or maybe a little bit smaller. Residential uses, it's much smaller pieces. So, the way the infrastructure and servicing is set up is different. So, we identified these three things, the floor-to-floor heights, because again, typically residential is a shorter floor-to-floor height on a tower, because you want to maximize the number of floors. The infrastructure planning and servicing of it became another piece, and then the envelope, like I talked about, the taut envelope. And those three kind of characteristics kind of set up some strategies that we think are really great opportunities for innovation and kind of pushing the envelope a little bit with the eventual development and design team that works on the site. But this idea of a flexed building that will allow the city and/or the developers involved in this project to adapt the building as needed as you move into the future was something everybody was really excited about. And so, in the drawings you're seeing here is eventually we kind of got to, with a, you know, a flexible, adaptable building, there's a billion different variations of a program that we could do at this moment in time. And one of the things that we pushed the staff on was, well, right now, let's just say, what is this? What can we do for this to kind of put a line in the sand and say, this is what we're looking at, knowing that there's going to be strategies employed to flex and adapt the building to the future? So, as you can see right here, what, and Jeff and I will talk a little bit more as we get into this, the stack kind of started to settle. So, the red is kind of a retail use at Level 1. The 3 became more of a focus on that commercial, quote-unquote, "office" type of use. And the orange that you're seeing here was more of a residential use. And so, then the question became, as we started to see on the right-hand side of building section, you're seeing kind of lines of how we dealt with balconies, for example. Because residential amenities were important, and balconies is one of the more significant ones that we would see. And that obviously has a big impact on the look of the building from an aesthetic perspective because it's either a taut, tight envelope, where you're seeing glazing or other things all the way out to the edge, or there's some balconies, right? And flexibility is a really interesting conversation there.
So, what we've discovered, though, is that by having this very similar floor plate, no matter whether, what the uses are, no matter what, we want to have retail on that first floor. And this provides us a great opportunity to have that retail use that we've been wanting in downtown, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that nicer restaurant with, you know, tablecloths and white linen napkins that we've been trying to encourage and attract into other locations in downtown, including, or D6, yes.
And other districts?
We have, you know, working with the private sector and finding a location for that, we have not been successful. So, with, you know, if we move forward with a project partnering with a developer, we could take control and maintain control of that first floor retail so that we can derive what happens on that first floor space. And it provides a significant amount of retail space on the first floor, in addition to the fact that it can be designed to provide a significant amount of outdoor space, too, that then complements the Art Center and the pavilion that's right there.
Both, Jeff, one of the art centers...
Specifically, though, we do not have food prep locations close by, and so, the opportunity to provide that amenity close by the Art Center, we think is significant. So, even if you had, I don't know, a catering kitchen or a kitchen, a commercial kitchen in the back of the first floor, or on that first floor, to service the Art Center as an amenity, we think that would be significant. And we believe that would be like the first thing we could easily do. I mean, there's a demand exists today for that, so...
I'll skip this slide. Mr. Brady covered this one, but yes, we have planned into this the ability to provide, whether it's food service that serves the Art Center, or whether it's food service that's generally available for other downtown events and activities. In addition, we have included and kept ASU in our conversations as we've been going through this concept development with the idea that this building can support, whether it's one or two, three floors of ASU use, that could then be, as you can see, you know, if you're inside the building, that direct connection, visual connection to the MIC Center and the plaza. So, this could be a great opportunity for ASU's next step in downtown as well.
So, as we started to kind of see those types of things come into place, one of the things that we wanted to do was kind of proof of concept. There's some advantages to the site that I referred to earlier, and really what that was, was about the size of the site. Typically, when you see an office development, many of you have been involved in some of those around here, they want a larger floor plate, and that's part of the reason why conversion to residential is difficult. You have, for example, you know, a 30,000 to 40,000 square foot floor plate, and the depth does not work with the residential units because you have what we call kind of a, it's basically the ratio of floor plan to envelope, because there are codes that are required with residential uses that you have to have access to daylight. So, it just doesn't work out sometimes on these larger floor plates. This site is right about perfect. We're going to get somewhere between 20,000 and 25,000 square feet per floor plate, so the footprint to build in. And as you can see in this slide, we went through when we started to prove that concept out, that we could do an office use. We looked at the cores, we looked at the structural systems, we looked at, and I didn't include slides here, that one of the things was that servicing and the, you know, the HVAC systems, for example. There are certain ways to kind of go from the beginning and create chases or these kind of vertical shafts through the building and have them strategically located. So, for example, if it converts to a residential, it would be easier to sleeve those through. There's some understanding of what that meant from a cost perspective, from the upfront side, but these are the things that allow for that flexed building. And then, on the right side, you're seeing where that residential units could start to be. So, the point is, is we proved out that it could work as a commercial floor plan, and we proved out that it could work as a residential. And Councilmember Duff, to your point as well, and Jeff and I actually talked about this, the orange floor plate could also be, go back to a hotel concept, right? That is the, kind of the intent of the study was to show that this type of a floor plate, because of the scale, could allow us to flex through a lot of different uses. And then, taking it one step further, we also began to look at test fits, just to kind of see how it could look. So, on the left side, you're seeing kind of a typical office, you know, floor plate that you'd see any number of different brokers that would come in and do a test fit. There's no company or anything involved in this one, we just were kind of throwing it based on the experience that we've had. And on the right-hand side, you're seeing kind of some of those ASU design guidelines that were used for the MIC Center, for example, and we laid out and did a test fit for a floor for an ASU use. That's, any higher education institution could utilize that floor. It works out quite well. We just happened to use those design guidelines and specifically some of the spaces that were used at MIC because it made some sense from an adjacency perspective. So, then lastly, what we wanted to do was not necessarily design what the building could look like. Really, from the onset, what we were trying to do is design kind of a process to what this thing could look like. And so, what we did is we went up kind of looking at very different envelopes and providing different versions of design based on those kind of things that we had talked about from the beginning. For example, this idea of flexibility. So, what we ended up doing was studying and looking at construction techniques. We talked about the such things as you can see on the slide here, different things that could help from a budgetary perspective, whether it's unitization, whether it's prefabrication, and basically provided three very different looks to the building that could be potentially part of the outcome of where this could lead eventually. And then, lastly, kind of looking at some of those slides in particular, that the last scheme that you're seeing on the far right, we also provided a couple other slides for you to look at. And again, this isn't necessarily about design, it's more about what could be in that process. But we wanted to show the appropriate scale and where we ended up at the end of the day working with staff. We are really excited about this because of what it did to kind of bookend and kind of create this campus perspective, what we're trying to do downtown, right? And we love the look of this massing and provided a couple more shots for you to look at, and you can just kind of flip through those, to your slides. All right.
Mayor and Council, so our next steps, we have a little bit of work to do to be able to clean up, or, it's not clean up, sorry, to complete...
Wrap up.
Wrap up and complete the feasibility and concept study. Once we've completed the feasibility and concept study, we'd like to take that opportunity for a little while to socialize this amongst the development community and see whether we can generate some interest for a development partner to move forward. Following that, we would then probably create a RFQ to RFP process to see whether or not there would be a developer interest to move forward with the project. But also, at the same time, we're going to continue our conversations with ASU. As you'll see in the next presentation, we are suggesting to provide ASU the direct opportunity to be a tenant into the space, as well as provide ASU the opportunity to be the developer of the space. And the reason we're including that is that this could be a great opportunity for ASU to bring in the corporate partnerships that want to be located next to the MIC Center and the other activities that they're doing down here. So, with that, thank you for your time. We're happy to answer any other questions.
Great, thank you. Council, questions on this presentation? Ms. Duff?
So, this project, is this considered to be a city of Mesa property, or are we selling that, you know, doing RFQ, kind of like unload it to someone else for ownership, or releasing it?
This, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, this is, you know, it is currently city-owned property. Our intent, and you'll see that as part of the IGA presentation, is our intent would be the city would continue to maintain ownership of the land. And depending on who our partner was, would be, is whether or not it'd be a long-term lease for the building, or whether it'd be a long-term ground lease.
But the building itself, the improvements, could be owned by a developer, or ASU, or the city. I don't, you know, our idea hopefully is that we bring, invite a developer and who comes in and puts the improvements on the ground lease from the city, then they own the improvements, they take on the capital responsibility to build it. And that we're not necessarily ownership of the building itself, and we could be. We think it'd be easier for them to attract, you know, private interest, maybe ASU to come in. Our philosophy throughout today, and my philosophy will always be, for city-owned land around our super block of the city of Mesa, is that we never sell that land. That's just not, I don't think, I've never seen that as a strategy in my previous life. Even for major hotel developments, it was always a ground lease because the city wanted to make sure that the intent and purpose of that development continued, and that that lease was a way to guarantee the performance and the continued use of the intention the city had from the get-go, so...
And there is one other question. There is... And we started off with a consideration about parking, what could be supported. So, are we looking at the Serine Garage as the option for parking?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, in addition to the Serine Garage, this project, this concept assumes that we will have to develop additional parking in the vicinity of the Serine Garage. So, we, the engineering department completed a feasibility study a little while ago for the development of a, I think it's a four-level, 400-ish space parking structure that is immediately to the south of the Serine Garage on the area of the surface parking lot of the MAC on the far east side.
Okay. Just south of the Serine?
Just south of the Serine.
So, the Serine Garage itself structurally couldn't support any vertical...
The Serine Garage itself structurally can support one additional deck. The cost of retrofitting the Serine Garage over the cost of building a new garage is, there's a significant premium for the retrofit. And even with that one additional deck, we would, this scale, whether it's eight stories or whether it's 14 stories, would still require additional parking to be able to support it.
Great, okay, thank you. Forgot to do them all.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you for your presentation. You know, I've always wondered what would happen with that property, and I'm just thrilled that we're actually having a conversation about this because I think it's extremely important and helped me understand the scale and the floor plate for it. Because I like to have more density in downtown Mesa and have the flexibility of allowing, whether it's living, workspace, and commercial, and allowing the different floors to flex for that opportunity for development, I think is extremely important. To Councilmember Duff's point, parking is a premium in downtown Mesa, and we have to be able to compensate for that. And, you know, utilizing that, what's northwest corner of Serine and First Ave, just south of the existing garage would be critical for a new parking garage. Did I say it right, Jeff?
Jeff, go to that slide, too, because it's easier to kind of imagine where the extension of that parking garage to the south of Serine would be.
Be right here, if my mouse is showing up.
Okay, just south. So, over the parking...
Over the surface parking, yeah.
Well, I think we need to take this opportunity to look at our future for this site because it's underutilized, and, you know, when we have these underutilized parcels, we need to take advantage of that. And I agree with Mr. Brady, we need to maintain ownership of them and then help push that development through with a developer. And obviously, ASU is somewhat interested here because there's three representatives here this morning, so thank you for getting up early and coming here. But, yeah, I'm excited about this opportunity, so I look forward to continuing on the study for it.
I'll add my enthusiasm for this. I think this has long been, in my mind, really the most strategic, prestigious, you know, empty spot in our downtown. And I think this study, thank you, Ben, was an important kind of first step for all of us to visualize what the possibilities are there. And I think it helps, I think it's going to attract a lot of attention from the development community, from ASU, from others, now that we have something to see and imagine, and a lot of the due diligence on what it would take to explore going forward with the building has been accomplished. So, this is an important first step. I'm anxious to see us, you know, this has waited too long. You know, I remember when Joe Woods developed these buildings, you know, back when I was a teenager, and it was an amazing accomplishment back then, but this little piece, this 51 through 55, kind of never, it was kind of the, never really was something to be proud of. But, so it's a great opportunity to take advantage of the very strategic location in front of a light rail station, adjacent to the Art Center, adjacent to all of the city amenities and the ASU. So, really, it's, we're only going to get a chance to do this right once. So, I think it is important that we be very deliberate, very thoughtful, go through all these studies. But I think it is also now important that we then put out the RFP and start looking for partners, or, the city of Mesa is good at a lot of things, but I don't think this type of real estate development is really what we're known for. So, I don't want to see us take the lead on it necessarily, but I do think that we could be an important part of it. Ms. Millsberry?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything because I feel like everything that I was going to say has already been said. I, thank you for doing this because this is super exciting, and I also appreciate that we're having the conversation and moving forward. How many stories is the 63 East Main?
Eight stories.
That's eight, okay. So, this would potentially be taller than that, correct? Just because I know with Mesa Public Schools there, they have a lot of employees, and then when people come, that's where everyone comes to come do like fingerprinting and stuff like that. And there's already been parking issues, so I would just really want to make sure that we have plenty of parking, which sounds like we will if we put another parking garage in, but that, I know that could be a concern there.
And Councilwoman Millsberry, real quickly, as a result of us acquiring the Brown and Brown parking, all of the city employees that are parking in the Serine Garage will be moving to the Brown, what are we calling it, the Hibbert Street parking garage, sorry.
Hibbert Garage, okay.
So, that, you know, immediately we'll open that up.
Perfect.
But then, of course, we'll want to use that capacity and the need to build an additional parking for this site. So, we want to make sure we, you're right, we need to make sure we have enough parking. But the decision to purchase the Hibbert Street parking garage will help out a lot immediately in the next year, as far as that congestion in that parking garage.
I forget about that. That's supposed to come up this year?
Yeah, we acquired it. We're now just received, I think, an architect's report on the, because it doesn't have the elevator, it doesn't have some things that we need in order to have a city employees going to, so we're working on that. So, we'll be coming to council with those improvements shortly.
You knew I was going to forget parking, Jeff. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brady?
On the next steps, Jeff, what's the timeline? Kind of, we're talking about six months, a year, 18 months?
You caught me off guard. We haven't actually talked about what time, the timeline that we intend to go. We will start socializing this amongst the development community immediately. We're going to start to see whether there's interest out there immediately. We're going to start to have the conversations, more serious conversations with the ASU immediately. How quickly we go into an RFQ and RFP, I think is something that we will still talk about, but I think it'd be reasonable that six months would be reasonable.
Mr. Summers?
Well, the timing issue, the concern I would have right now is interest rates are still high. The, we're just recovering from, you know, logistics issues, the cost of steel, and concrete is high, and my concern would be if we move, if we don't time this right and we move too fast, we're going to get less of a development here than we possibly could get if we timed that market right where interest rates come down. Hopefully, that will happen sometime this year. We'll start to see some relief from that, but we're seeing some projects dragging out or not hitting the design aesthetic we had hoped for because they're trying to save some money. So, that would be the other concern with this.
Valid, very valid, Councilmember Summers, very valid point. We have, we've had multiple projects, multiple developers that I work with have said that there's just projects that are just falling off altogether because of interest rates. They lose their, the financing goes away. The one thing I will say is that now, though, is a great time to be planning for this and being prepared for when the market is ready to go so that we have a project that the shovels can go in the dirt right away.
Yeah, this project is two years out before construction. Just to go through the process, looking at developer, then deciding a design, then, you know, Ben or someone like him has to design something like this, and that takes months to do, so...
Mr. Brady, are we planning to raise this building, the existing building?
Eventually, yes.
I mean...
Oh, you mean us do it now?
Yeah, are we going to do it, or are we going to put...
I don't think that was, I think that's just the assumption of the deal we would work out with a...
I would not be opposed to that.
Well, I know, I just don't disagree.
I'll drive the bill.
It does get used, there are some of our nonprofits that use it for storage and other activities right now, so... And, you know, I don't, just don't know what we'd do without that big red bee sitting there. It's something we might consider, but I'd like to pass that cost on to the developers.
Well, even if we did it and then just pass that on, yeah, exactly.
I think your impact, you would want to wait, Chris, just to, from the impact of what it would do to MAC and everything else, you want to have as minimal impact.
Yeah, it'd be pretty disruptive for that. There's not a lot of, there's just not a lot of lay-down room. That's going to be, the big challenge will be on construction. Because, you know, taking, we've seen what taking a lane of Main out in front of the grid looks like, and that's not easy.
And really, that was one of the more significant reasons to look at those kind of prefabricated type of unitized systems that would be able to, you know, just, you're craning things up, basically, and putting in place. I think those types of uses from a contractor coming in online will minimize that impact as much as possible. I think those are absolutely a necessity on a location like this. This is, you know, doing this kind of elsewhere in the valley, I'm really excited to see downtown Mesa having this challenge, which is something that we haven't really had, right? That is a really important thing to think about from the design and construction side. That is a really important thing to think about from the design and construction side.
Ms. Duff.
Yes, I just have one more comment. If you can go back to slide two, and also, it, it has to do with our next presentation, is that I feel very strongly about how taking this opportunity in time for us to plan out our arts and innovation district. We identified the opera, you know, our innovation district some years ago by the mayor, and those opportunities invited ASU, and that has been a catalyst. But we have our art center, and as we go across, and then we have ASU there, and we have our, our city buildings that have opportunities to really be serving our economy through arts and innovation, and through the digital arts, through the 22nd century type of businesses and ideas and concepts and education that will drive our city. So from the art center, as we move north, going through the plaza, creating that pathway, a literal pathway through the plaza beside ASU, which crosses First Street up to the library, which we don't have that, we'll see that in the next presentation. There is a pathway on the west side of the library, and that connects also into the, our convention center and our Mesa Amphitheater, which are great assets, but they need to be redone. They need to be brought up to current technologies and standards and, you know, and be leveraged to take advantage of the things that are happening in this corridor. While I'm on it, just, I could see just the convention center turning into like a esports and gaming thing where you have international, you know, the huge screens and people coming in and doing things that no one else is doing, but this will have a corridor that people will come to. I want to be part of Mesa because I want to be part of this creativity that's happening in the arts and innovation district. So connecting our arts and innovation to have a place instead of just being a concept is very important. We have so many assets here in the city that we own, that we can create this corridor that many downtowns don't have that privilege. So it's really important that we look ahead, especially as we're visioning for our 2050 plan and how, what the future of our city is, that we look at the assets and make these future visions to create the synergy that will drive our economic sustainability for downtown, but also for the city of Mesa. We've seen downtown have its heyday and then 40 years of being depressed. And having density in some wonderful local businesses isn't enough. We need to have something that really identifies why we are pulling, why we have an art center, why we have ASU here, and pulling that all together for our sustainability of our city and, and the area. We have a lot of investment, so do a lot of private development and residences and stuff, and why they're here. And I think it's an opportunity that can't be missed, and I'm excited that we're taking that opportunity right now. Thanks.
That's the perfect introduction for the next agenda item. Thank you, Councilmember Duff. So why don't we, thank you, Ben.
Yes, of course.
Jeff, let, let's go ahead and transition into item 1B is a presentation on an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with Arizona State University for ASU Downtown Projects.
Good morning, Mayor. Still Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation. This morning, I'd like, we're going to walk through the, the primary deal points for an amended and restated IGA with ASU further downtown center. I'll start, though, with a reminder of where we are today. Currently, we have an IGA that was adopted in 2018 by the council and the board of regents. That IGA imagined three ASU buildings, as well as the studios at Mesa City Center and the plaza. As this slide shows, the, the phase one commitments of that IGA have been met by both parties. However, ASU has some ongoing commitments that will survive the, the replacement of this IGA with a new one, related to the academic programming, the number of students and faculty that, that are on site, as well as the amount of O and M and the, the maintenance of a reserve and replacement fund. And now, the future phases that, that, the commitments that would be terminated with this agreement by, by adopting a new agreement would be the obligation for a building B of 60, 75,000 square feet and a, and a building C of 50,000 to 65,000 square feet, that in total would have resulted in around 2,000 students and a significant amount of, of O and M cost. With the new, with the, the IGA that we're presenting today, the amended and restated IGA that we're presenting today, the primary terms are, I guess I'm going to step back one step. When we first did the IGA with ASU in 2016 and then subsequently in 2018, our vision for the mix center was a, a taller building, and due to the program and the needs of the space of the program, the building got shorter and longer. So one of the spaces that we had identified on this site, building C on this site plan, kind of got ate up by the mix center. So in, in, in reality, our development of the mix center made it so that one of the sites wasn't really a viable site. So the primary goal of the amended and restated IGA is to identify new sites where the next phase of ASU development can happen. There are three sites that we are calling potential development sites. Those are on the map, that's Site One, that's the, the existing post office at, at Center and First Street. Site Two is the surface parking lot in front of the main public library. Site Three is our municipal building located at 55 North Center. And then there are the identification of two partner sites, one of which we just got done talking about at 51 through 55 East Main. The other is, as our, our current council chambers where we're sitting today, as this is replaced with the new council chambers at Center and Main, that build, this building will become available, and we include that as a partner site where we could use a joint, we could jointly use this building for, for city purposes as well as academic purposes. Another key component to the amended restated IGA would be the renegotiation of our existing lease for the mix center to convert it from a, a building lease to a ground lease and provide ASU the opportunity to own the improvements once the city has retired of all of our bond debt on the site. That would, that lease amendment, though, would come with the obligation that ASU can continually operate this with the academic programming and, and student and faculty requirements that were envisioned in the lease that we originally adopted. So I'm going to go into some detail with each of the sites. The, each site has some, a little bit different business terms that come with it. Might call them triggers related to the post office. This is a site that the city owns. It's been the subject of a long-term ground lease with a, a private developer who actually built the post office back in 1970, 71, when it opened. That lease is going to, they, they exercise all of their options, all of their extensions. That lease will terminate at the end of, sorry, May 31st of 2025, at which time that property and, the building and the property will revert back to the city's ownership. Our intention, to make clear, our intention is to work with the post office and continue to have a, an operating post office on this site as long as we are in control of the site. In addition to, as we're working with ASU, our intention would be to work with ASU to incorporate a retail component for a post office, similar to what they have done in downtown Phoenix at Civic Space Park, that there's a building on the north side that was a former post office, very similar to this, that was a distribution center as well, that they, that they've redeveloped into ASU uses, but they maintain the post office on the, on the interior of the building. Related to the actual development of the site, Mayor, we know that, that urgency and, and taking the next step with ASU and actually bringing next, the next forward, project forward is, is a, is a, is a priority. So what we have included in this IGA is something that we're calling a development determination period. And so that's a span, that's the attorney's way of saying, the trigger. What is, what is, what is the timeframe that we have to have in order to get a deal done? So if, if we take back control of the building by May 31st of 2025, this IGA says that we have to have a lease, we have to determine whether or not it's a joint development or ASU development. We have to have conceptual plans, done budgets, initial budgets established. We have to have a site lease that includes all the minimum, minimum obligations of ASU. It'll include all the terms of the lease, which would be a long-term lease, and it would include the, the, the provision that ASU would be able to own the, the improvements once the building is completed. But that deal would have to be done by June 1st of 2025 in order for ASU to continue to have rights to this site. If not completed by June 1st of 2025, then the, the site would, all control will come back to the city, and we would be able to move forward with whatever project we would like ourselves.
Ms. Duff.
Jeff, as I mentioned earlier in a quick conversation this morning, I would like to consider having the DDP, I guess we'll call it, until December 31st, 2024, sometime in January. One of the reasons is it takes so much work and focus to come together to earn an agreement, and in January of '25, we'll have a change of guard in, in council. I don't know what that'll look like or entail, but I hate, would hate to start all over or find disagree. You know, I would like to continue the momentum and get it done. Also, for the continuation of the post office, that, the post office is very central to this area and to Mesa, and to cease its operations. If we had some kind of idea what, how that's going to look by the end of the year, maybe by the time the lease ends, we could continue that in a way that's more smooth so that we don't have this interrupted period of not having a post office and maybe no lease for a post office to be there. I, I don't know. I'm a little concerned about the post office and also a change or swing of agreement within the city during this period. So, and, and we could always make a six-month extension if needed to get us to the June 1st, but I really would like to put some focus and fire on it to try to get it summed up by the end of the year. Thanks.
Councilmember Duff, I, I couldn't agree with you more. And I can tell you that, that the, the deadline here of, of, you know, a year from this June is what the, is proposed for this IGA, but I think the intention of both parties is for it to happen far more quickly than that. I had conversations with Dr. Kroll last week about their level of interest in this building. And so I, I think it's, I'm not, I've heard from them that they're, they're.
December 31st?
That, yeah, that these, this is a deadline that's far off, and, and the actuality of reaching an agreement on this is something that I expect to happen long before that.
And I have December 31st of this year.
Yeah, and Mayor, and Councilwoman Duff, I think, and I think that's, we can certainly make that change. I think where we have to be, and you said it, and I think it's very important, we still have to work out a deal with the post office, right? We don't want to, first and foremost, my priority is to, it's interesting, because this is coming up so soon, the post office has not said anything to us. We've now reached out to the post office because we want to make sure that there's a continuation. You know, if the deal can't, you know, if the deal's even on paper, but it's not going to be executed for another year after this, we want to make sure that they're still there. And so we want to, at some point, either assume the current lease that they have, arrangements they have, but we need to, we are working kind of parallel to this in a conversation with the post office to make sure, at a minimum, we have an established relationship that can continue and then adapt to whatever proposal may come. But we don't want the post office just to disappear and, and feel like they're being moved out because I think even for them, we have to kind of work with them to figure out, well, how long would it take for them, you know, if we keep the, what'd you call it?
Retail.
Retail part of post office there, maybe the distribution part could be, you know, moved somewhere else. Well, that's good, you know, we understand how it takes time to do things like that. So we need to work and we need to get, where their timeline is too. So it's one thing to have an agreement, we agree. We also need to work with the post office to make sure the timing when something could actually happen is coordinated with them also.
The post office isn't part of the DDP, right? We're.
No.
It is?
Oh.
I mean, an agreement.
Oh.
It is basically with ASU.
Right.
They're not a party to the agreement.
Yeah, so that, okay.
Right, right. Two separate, parallel paths, Councilmember Duff.
Okay.
We, we have made contact with the post office, but one of the things I missed on this slide is that the, the, this would inv, and would assume that there's up to five years after the deal is actually signed, that before the building would be finally constructed. If it, and by, by, you know, way of example, we had a lease with ASU for the mix center in 2018, and it was 2020, August of 2022 before it actually opened. So there's, there's a several-year period there that we don't want to lose the post office. So we are going to be working closely with them to make sure that we are able to maintain them, maintain their services in the interim. And hopefully, there will be something that we can work out with them so that they can be partner and be part of a redevelopment opportunity as well.
We've said this already a couple of times, but I think it is important, we can't, can't say it too many times, for the downtown business community and residential community that, that relies so heavily on this post office, we need to just make sure they understand that, that we're not, have, we have no interest in eliminating the post office function in downtown Mesa. That, that is, that's the premise that we're, that we're doing this, is that we're not evicting the post office from downtown Mesa. That, that, that'll be built into any, any deal going forward. Mr. Summers.
I'm just curious if we can evict the post office. I'm not, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in doing that. I'm not interested in doing that. Their lease is up?
Yeah, in 2025.
Well, it's going to be up to the post office, I think, to try to figure out with, as much as it's been shrinking, how, what kind of footprint they want, but we definitely need the services downtown because I, we have the same issues in my district, well, different issue, I guess, but it's still considered a rural post. So it's, it's interesting how that service comes. So it's, it's still important to have the post office, and I would encourage the federal government to have a presence in downtown because it's, it's essential. My question on ASU, how, how compliant are they with the current IGA with the number of students? I think the number was 750 students physically in downtown. Are they meeting those obligations?
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, ASU is exceeding all of their obligations as it relates to both the mix center and the studio space.
Okay. And if I, if I recall, I do believe that that is on the independent city auditor's task list for this year is to review ASU for its compliance?
I don't know.
I don't.
I think so. All right.
Jeff, I think you just said there is a thousand students.
I believe it's around a thousand students there now.
Physical? It, like, showing up?
Yep.
Not online?
No, yes, so that, these are.
Okay.
The, in our lease, we actually had to define what counted as a student. So they may not be full-time students, may not be degree-seeking students at this location, but they are students that are coming to this site and taking classes.
And that's, and that's important because that's part of the economic development strategy here is to have folks show up, grab a lunch, maybe even rent an apartment downtown that, that's getting built. That's part of, I mean, otherwise, if they're online and attending from elsewhere, we're not seeing that benefit, so.
The, the, just the nature of the, the programming that happens in the building makes it a difficult, difficult one to do online.
Good.
The, the second.
Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Duff.
One more comment on, on this as well as any other agreements we do with ASU, that I personally would like to see the future phases of ASU being in subject matters that leverage what's going on at the mix and complements the arts in order for us to accomplish what we're, you know, this arts and innovation district. So it wouldn't be a nursing school. It wouldn't be, you know, something like that. It needs, I think, to be in the digital arts or along the new technologies in order to accomplish the vision of the innovation district. And more so, why, you know, why do we have ASU? Yeah, it's important to have students here, you know, they're, they're bringing economic impact, but the bigger vision is that they're creating new ideas that are going to spur incubation and entrepreneurship, and we will be building businesses. Instead of focusing on attracting businesses, we are building businesses in this environment and being a catalyst for creativity of new businesses and the new technologies. And I think that is powerful and part of the component of an innovation district is from education through the support of small businesses, which we're doing in the studios and workforce development, and having spaces for businesses to take off and people to live and, and collaborate here. So this is part of a bigger vision, not just the school itself, so that we have an idea of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish in downtown. It's more than being a place for ASU to be part of our downtown, it's part of the creativity of. It's part of the creativity of entrepreneurship and incubation. We see so many creative businesses in this new world of VR, AR, AI, you name it. This is just the beginning of all that. And downtown Mesa would be a wonderful place to have a vortex of activity to create those businesses. Thank you.
All right, next site, or the next site that we have included as a potential development site is the, the surface parking lot on, in front of the main public library. As we've negotiated as this part of this IGA, ASU would be given a development determination period of a, of 10 years as an initial starting point. And that development determination period could be extended up to three times, five years each, depending on ASU, whether or not other ASU developments happen. So if development happened with ASU on the post office site, the development determination period for the library parking stop would, parking lot would be extended by five years to be a 15-year. If, if, if Site 3 were developed, the next site were developed, that would provide another five years. So up to a total of 25 years of, of an option for ASU to be able to develop the site. Similar to the other sites before ASU would be able to move forward and during the development determination period, we would have to be able to agree on whether or not it's a joint development, ASU development, any lease terms, any budget, as well as any of the minimum requirements ASU would have to bring from students and programming perspective. One of the wrinkles on this one is that this is our main public library. That is the parking for our public library. So any, any deal that we would have with ASU would have to, at a minimum, include a replacement, like-for-like replacement of the public parking as part of the project. Not included in here is that we also know that that is the front door of the library that could be covered up. So design and how you manage the design of the site is going to also be a key component and I think would be definitely part of our decision-making process.
Jeff, before you leave this, sorry, Mayor, just jumping in.
No, please.
Is, you know, 25 years is a long time. So I assume in the agreement that there is an option to terminate by either party, given a certain amount of notice or something like that. Because the obligations for either entity for that long really ties up the property.
25 years is, is a long time. You will find that this is the longest of the, of the periods that we have provided as part of the agreement. And the reason that we were more comfortable on this site is that it is a parking lot for a library that we intend to maintain as a library for foreseeable future. So any redevelopment of the site, I think, would always have to take into consideration whether or not the library is there.
But it precludes the city from considering any other development besides something with ASU. So that's a fair point. I think this is a problematic site in front of the main library. How you're going to do that to accommodate the parking, but also just the feel and presence of a downtown library. This has been insistent by ASU to have the site. I think it's problematic. I think it's something we can put on the table for, to explore in the future. You know, that 25 years is a long time. It means the city doesn't have the ability, independent of ASU, to consider other options for 25 years.
I mean, in an ideal world where money wasn't a problem, it would be nice to have the library along the street and the parking behind it and connecting it through the post office. Because if the post office is going, assuming that ASU utilizes that property and it'll need the parking as well, you know, and that could service and access both. And it also butts up, I think, to our, now it goes, I'm trying to think of my logistics here. I have to look at the map. Does it go up into the convention center? Yes.
Yes.
So, you know, that gives a more smooth transition of parking, knowing that at our convention center area is, will have parking. And so that's a smooth, rather than having, and especially along a street that, I don't know. You know, you always want to make sure that that is activated by people-oriented activities, so. I appreciate being able to build on top of it, trying to, the library is going to suffer, I think, so. I don't know. There's a lot of things to talk about on that, and it's not something we need to figure out, I guess, right now, but, I don't know.
Councilmember Duff, to, to your earlier question though, it's not in this presentation because it's getting into some of the legalese. It's way, way more detail in the legalese. But the, the most recent draft of the IGA that we have provided to ASU includes a provision that the city can go to ASU for any of these sites and request that they be removed from the IGA. ASU would have the opportunity to say yes or no and provide us reasonable reasons for whether it's a yes or no. And if, if, if the time came, we would, short of terminating the agreement, we do have an option to go to ASU and say, we have a potential to development that we'd like to move forward and even offer up an alternative site.
Yeah, and I think as we look at the visioning for, you know, from Main Street all the way up to university, that we kind of re-look at strategizing how to achieve parking for ASU and see if there's some other options. I don't really like it having a parking lot there on First Street. It really would be nice if a building was there, even if it was the building, the library was above the parking or something. But just to be all parking vertically on a major street in a major part of our, I don't know. Anyway, maybe we can look at some other options.
Well, the, the, the plan is not for that parking lot to become a parking facility by ASU, right?
Our point is, no, but the parking there has to be, the public parking has to be accommodated somehow.
So have we thought about combining the two? So that if this parcel is taken, the entire parcel is taken and the library becomes part of whatever new building?
We, Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. We have not discussed the library being part of this development site. That, much like the post office, having the library, the main library in downtown is very important to us as well.
But is this building important? You know what I mean? Is this a building that matter, you know, so that it?
The library is the most important building.
Yeah.
We're trying to figure out a way to find, it's just finding real estate, right, for the next opportunity for ASU. ASU identified the site. We've created, tried to create a, you know, an opportunity, what that would look like, the possibility. Who knows? Could you make that work for both of them? You know, I, I think it's a big challenge. You know, we had planned on putting solar cover park, color parking here. Do we still do that or not? You know, so there's, there's a lot of conversations we have to have in the future about how long do we just hold this property for this possibility and understanding, you know? It's a great, like, size of property, but it, you know, I do wish the library was closer to the front, but we, you know, that's not a choice we have.
But if Hibbert becomes that corridor, right, this is Hibbert, the east, then it is, it is on the, you know.
And on, on the west side, there's actually a walkway. A pathway, this, few people realize it exists, that goes up to the convention center. We want to retain that as well.
My other question was, the extensions, the five-year extensions are predicated on development of the other sites?
Yes. So the, the, the way we described it, when we, ASU has to earn the right to more than 10 years on this.
Personally, I, to me, I, I understand why ASU wants the discussion of this property included in the agreement because it just kind of acknowledges the reality that this is the adjacent piece of property in between, you know, a lot of development. And I, I think, I envision, if, if this does become developed, something along the lines of an Eco Mesa-type development, where you have some, we maintain the public parking on the floor, but, you know, above that, there could be academic or research or some type of a building. And to Chris's point, I think absolutely, we don't want to hide our public library behind a parking garage or another building. And so another, for this to be, you know, five councils from now, when this is actually decided, by then, I think we'll be talking about reorienting the front door of the library so that it is public-facing. So I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that have to happen and that will happen before this becomes a, a reality that we're actually talking about using this parking lot for something other than the parking lot for the library. Ms. Spillsbury.
That is what I was going to say, more of like the Eco Mesa vibe there with the parking and then stuff on top. But I do think there's a lot of things that could be figured out with, by design, right? So, but there are potentially even more future sites ASU could use, right? I mean, obviously not in this IGA agreement, but as you go down and around the convention center, we have that building that we now own and all, I mean, there's a lot of potential growth there, correct? So, I mean, I think it's, it's fine to have this as a part of an IGA with that long of a term just because there is so much more to be decided. Because I love, I think we really need to just keep talking about the Innovation Arts District so that we really do keep all of those avenues open. I love the idea of pulling in the whole convention center campus to be part of that. I mean, it, we already have the hotel right there. There really is some exciting synergy that can happen as we keep that in mind all the way through there. So keep bringing it up, Jen.
And Councilmember Spillsbury, what, what, the, the IGA draft includes an exhibit of what, of defining an area that we're calling city center. And that defined area is much larger than the sites that you see here. It goes all the way up to the convention center, grabs all of that parking lot, and it goes down south along the Mac too. So that, we included provisions that other sites that we don't identify today could become a potential development site and that we would separately negotiate what the terms of those sites would be if they became a viable option.
And I'll just add one more comment on this. And, and I did, I think, make an assumption it was going to be parking for ASU, so I apologize for that. That was an assumption that wasn't correct. But the other thing, keeping this as-is, being a parking area, is not ideal either. I mean, just because it's a parking lot along a lovely street and it should be more people. So somehow, some transition, some creativity of being able to activate First Street in Centennial with the greenways and, and people and stuff, instead of just a parking lot. Anyway, I have some concerns, but I also have a concern that it stays just the way it is too. Because being a parking lot along a major street is not ideal in a downtown.
The third site, third potential development site is our municipal building at 55 North Center Street, the first city hall. The development determination period for this site would begin, it's a, it's a date unknown. It would begin the day that the city notified ASU that we know by a date certain that the building would be vacant and available for, for redevelopment. That would provide us, ASU two years, and the city and ASU two years to be able to complete the deal, which include, again, a lease, determination of joint or ASU development, and any other, any other necessary agreements to be able to complete the deal as well as the minimum requirements that ASU would have to have from an academic and programmatic perspective. Right now, we are including a, a requirement that once the deal has been completed, that ASU would have three years to complete a project on the site. Again, the concern on the city's perspective is that we don't want to have vacant buildings on our block when we are, can have control over that. ASU has, does have concern with that three-year period, concern that it's too short of a period, given how much time went into design and construction of the Mix Center, that that would be difficult for them to be able to complete a project within three years. So we may continue to have some conversations on that point. And again, as with the other sites, if we are unable to reach a deal within the development determination period at the end of that determination period, the site would, full, full, ASU would lose their option for the site and the city would be able to move forward with a project of our own. Moving on to partner locations, the first of which is where we're sitting today. The slide calls it the former city council chambers because that's what we're calling it in the IGA, but it's our current council chambers. In the next nine months or so, as, as the new council chambers come online, the IGA provides the city, the city and ASU, the opportunity and the option to be able to create a joint develop, or a joint, a joint use agreement through a licensing agreement where the city would design and construct improvements to this building that would help it function better for the, the intended city purposes, but also potentially help it function better for academic purposes. ASU already at the Mix Center is, is in need of additional classroom space. So this building, given, given the, the programming that's happening in there, this building actually would function fairly well for their, their academic programming because most of their spaces don't want light, they don't want exterior sound. So this building, being designed as it is, actually could function fairly well for those purposes.
Jeff?
Yes.
So in the city council chambers, we have our new building and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be moving in there. What other activities occur, the advisory boards, planning and zoning? Those would transition also to the new, so it, is there any recurrent use that we use as a city that would be remaining?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, during the day, this is one of the few locations where we have, where we can do departmental training. Because of the auditorium seating, we can actually have departments come. We are in desperate need of more space for our employee training. We're now down to the south center campus where we're in an old high school, grade, yeah, high school. And it's just, I mean, it shows its age. Ultimately, that campus needs to be redone too eventually, and we're trying to work through a master plan. But this ideal seat, setting of the auditorium seating is really valuable for us just as a council meeting with the public, having kind of where we have large groups of employees can come in, we can do training, departments can meet with them, I get to meet with them. So we use it quite often for just internal purposes. I'd love to be able to bring our employee training offices down here and do new employee orientation and employee training in this building. But it's set up for a classroom space. So we think, working with ASU on whatever is the technology or, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot to be done structurally. I mean, here, this could be turned into offices, but upstairs, the seating is pretty ideal. And so it's really kind of where the dais sits and kind of what would we do with the displays and making it work in the digital world. So I think whatever we would do for employee training works well for a classroom also. We would need to obviously collaborate with ASU on that. So that's kind of the intent, is to continue that use and probably move more of that use over into this location.
And then the final site, the final partner site, we've already talked through, had a presentation on 51 through 55 East Main, so I won't go into that detail. But really, again, what the IGA does is provides ASU an opportunity to either be a tenant for floors, floor or floors within a redevelopment with a private development partner, or it provides ASU the opportunity to be, be the developer. ASU does have good experience working with private developers themselves to, to bring in private development that also supports the academic functions of the, of ASU, but also provides opportunity for the, the entrepreneurial and innovation of new businesses, corporate partnerships that can be brought to bear for those that want to be located next to the technology and the academic activities that are happening at the Mix Center. In downtown Phoenix, we point to it as the Wexford model. They, they partnered with a company named Wexford, and they built a, 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 a new facility that ASU owns. Wexford, I'm sorry, Wexford will own, ASU leases from them. And then at the end of 30 years, ASU will own. But that site is home to their biomedical innovation zone. So there is a lot of activity that's happening there related to new, new businesses starting. Ideally, that would be an opportunity for 5155 so that we could see some of that economic development opportunity that would come from our investment in the Mix Center. So our next steps, we'd like to have council direction today on how you'd like us to proceed forward with the amended and restated IGA and the, the business terms we've presented today. With your direction, we would finalize the negotiations on that IGA and get this in front of council as, as quickly as possible, ideally in the next month or two. And then we are, we will begin negotiations on the post office site immediately. We've already had some really high-level discussions to the date. And we will continue, as we've mentioned before, we'll finalize that feasibility and concept vision for 5155 and start working through whether or not there is development opportunity there. And finally, we will move on and start thinking and putting together some concepts and on how we can reutilize the, the council chambers.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for all the, all the work. And thank Rick for ASU and Ward and Susan from ASU for being here, for being great partners and getting us to this point. Ms. Julie Spillsbury, yes.
So you mentioned ASU wasn't loving that three-year part. As the rest of the IGA goes, how is ASU feeling about everything?
We have come a long way in a short time. I, ASU, I think, and hopefully Rick or
Rick is here.
Yeah.
Rick can nod his head.
He's been nodding through a lot of this.
Yes. ASU, I think that, short of minor details, I think we are in, in, in close agreement on all the other business terms with ASU.
Okay. I can't miss the opportunity to once again bring up how much I love the downtown Phoenix ASU campus, and how that just, it's just an incredible campus to be down there, walk those streets. It's beautiful, it's vibrant and lively and full of people, and I have dreams that this area could also look like that. So I am in full support of continuing these partnerships with ASU. I think it's exciting. I love Jen's vision for this Arts and Innovation District, which I think is more than just your vision, it's what we all, yeah, it, but I think if we really are serious about making this, you know, better than it is, then let's do it. I mean, it's, we've already seen the energy that's been brought to this area with the plaza coming up, and I've attended so many events there, and they're just full of people, and it's just so exciting, and I, I think there's just an incredible opportunity for us to partner, to spread that out, and, and just bring some really exciting things to downtown Mesa, so I am in full support of, of this, and I think it looks great. I think there's things we need to look at closer and maybe tweak here and there, but I, I think for a basis for an IGA, it looks really good.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Jeff. I wanted to take all this in, I mean, you, you put a lot on our plate, and I appreciate that. You know, I want to go back to the post office. You know, the post office, you look at the post, the actual post that we have today was the former post office, been an integral part of our downtown Mesa heritage, and now we have our current post office, and I would never want that to be leaving from our downtown area, and I appreciate the distribution component of it, because it's so important for people from all around. I mean, for miles away, people come to that post office and do the distribution. I know there's other areas in the city that there's distribution as well, but looking at that, we need to have a post office in our downtown area. You know, I'm kind of struggling with the DDP on the five-year lease for the library, and, and I know there's more conversations on that, but I want to be sensitive. We have historic neighborhoods in our area that integrate into that area, the library, so whatever's happening there, you've got the Wilbur District, you've got your district as well, what's it called, the Evergreen, or, no, West Second, and others. You know, and incorporating some type of vision there with the future development of the library, and that component there, I think, is important, because some people like to get out and walk on a sidewalk and look at trees, and they look at landscape, and instead of having vertical buildings right there next to the sidewalks, or parking structures, you know, that takes away and detracts from our open space here in our downtown area. And then my last thought was 55 North Center was built many years ago with some architectural components like, like the studios have today, and we save those components. So are we talking about tearing down that building and building a new building, or?
Well, it's just, again, we didn't offer this, was asked to be put on the table. We do not have current plans right now to replace or move that, those, that function in downtown. It's just the possibility, if there were a time in the future, at some point, that building may, it, it has its challenges, it's not the favorite building for many employees who have to go to work there.
Neither are bathrooms, by the way.
Yeah, so, you know, in the future, we're gonna, you know, we'll have to always continue to assess the viability of that. I will tell you, beyond just the staff offices, it is probably the most frequently visited or whatever, by our customers, right? If you're in the development community for building permits and plan reviews, utility customers, it is the most heavily used access, publicly accessed building. So it would take, we'd have to really go through some thoughts. The idea is that at some point, the city said, you know, we have a better idea, we're gonna move it and do something else, then essentially, they get the first opportunity to find a way to develop it. But there's nothing that's pushing the city out of that building within this agreement. We still, it's still in our control to make that decision, but it's, but the, what it is, is that we can't go ask somebody else to come in and develop, but it has, it would only be ASU for these periods of time.
Sure.
But again, there's, right now, there's no plan, there's no active discussion about removing that function right now.
Okay.
In a previous life, before I had the nice offices that I had, I, I served my time in that building, and it could use some love. I, I will say though, say though, that if, if we were to move forward, and ASU were to move forward with this project there, I don't believe their intent is to raise the building, I believe their intent is to adapt or reuse the building.
I saw Rick go like this, so that's affirmative.
He made a few head gestures.
No, but again, thank you for the vision, because I think it's extremely important for our downtown area and our education, because that, like Councilmember Duff said, having that component there and moving forward for incubators and, and workspace and everything combined, and, and looking at the vision of what we have, city-owned assets, and I never like to lose our city-owned property or sell it, because once you lose it, you'll never get it back. Right, Mr. Brady?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
More questions. So, on the post office, what is, I know on the old post office, we had a deed restriction that it had to use for public use, and I don't know if we have any agreement, or is there any things that the federal government poses upon?
No, it's two different transactions, right? So the post office and the federally next to it were owned by the federal government, and the, and so when they moved out, it became surplus property, and so they then worked with the city and, and transitioned that to the city, but with those deed restrictions attached to it. In this case, the, was it been 50 years that, yeah, the 70s, right, ever? So since the 70s, the city owned that land initially, so it wasn't purchased by the federal government. A private developer who worked with the post office came to the city and got a significant, you know, long-term lease, then they built out the improvements for the post office, and then the post office has been leasing that from this family trust for 50 years or so. So what happens is that lease, that ground lease for those improvements expires in 25, June or May, what are, end of June of 25. So as part of that, that lease, I mean, we obviously still retain ownership of the land, but now the improvements also become owned by the city at the end of that lease.
Okay, great, so the federal government doesn't own the land, and so that's how we'll be able to, okay. I'm just thinking, you're probably not gonna be bored anytime soon, Jeff. You'll probably need more help. But just to expand, we have a lot of visioning going on here, and at some point, to complete some visioning going further north, to include the Convention Center and Mesa Amp, because we need to refresh both of those properties and integrate them into what's going on. So while we're visioning everything else, can we put some vision on that? So it's kind of like a set of, for this corridor to work, and of course, we'll be working for Site 17 and everything, and that's in housing and such, but, you know, the access ways, the connections will be part of that, but to continue that all the way up to university, including the Site 17 development, so that we have a one contiguous property that works and activates all along the way, and, and leverages the use as, along that walkway. Thanks.
My comment would just be comments. I understand why these sites were chosen by ASU, obviously it geographically creates that Innovation District. My, my only comment would be about the timeframes, you know, keeping them as tight as possible. I understand from ASU's perspective, things take time for planning, construction, things like that, but when we tie up our assets, I think we need to make sure that those timeframes are as tight as possible, to, to tie those up for this, for this future. I think it's a great plan and vision future, but let's just make sure that, you know, that, that tied-up timeframe is, I can't say any different type.
Great, thanks. I'll just add one more thing. I think this reminds me why we were excited, was it six or eight years ago, when we initially entered into this development agreement with ASU? We were looking, we wanted to have a downtown Innovation District, but we needed an anchor for that, we needed a, a brand that had, oh, that was an attractive brand, and ASU just fit the bill entirely, and it's, it's a world-class university, but it, as, if you go to downtown Phoenix or to downtown Tempe, you can see there are also amazing real estate developers. And so when you look at what's going on in downtown Phoenix or in downtown Tempe, it's just obvious that, that that would be, we would love to, to continue to attract that type of development here. So, so let's not lose sight of the fact that ASU, we're very grateful that you're in the building, and that we're having this conversation, and that you, you, you're, we share this agenda for improving the city of Mesa, and raising higher education attainment is something that we need to be better at, and the city of Mesa and ASU is, is a perfect partner for that. So, so thank you on the education side of it, but also thank you for the development chops that you bring to our downtown, where, where it's much needed. And so I, I appreciate Jeff and everyone that's worked on this, I, I'm a strong supporter of moving forward with this IGA, a strong supporter of, we, we can do multiple things at one time, but let's focus on the post office for now. These other buildings, well, I, I think if we're successful, if we add the post office that successes at the MIX, it does create, as Councilmember Duff talked about, this obvious, and, and Dr. Crowe, I know, shares this vision of, of a place where technology and creativity come together, that, it, it's very attractive for many, many reasons, including the economic impact of something like that. So I'm excited, Jeff, to see you move forward with the IGA, and look forward to that, coming back to us for a vote, where we can again go over the details, and then in the meantime, I'm, I, I share ASU's excitement with figuring out what we're gonna do sooner than later at the post office, because June of 25 is pretty much around the corner, so now is the time to be making some serious plans for that building. So again, thank you to everyone who's gotten us to this point. Any council, any other discussion on this item? All right, thank you, Jeff.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
This was Jen's for direction, so if we could just, I guess...
May I move direction, move forward? Okay. That doesn't require a vote, but I, I think...
I didn't hear any, so I say not to do this forward, so I will take that as direction.
Yeah, it, consensus is to move forward with the IGA as it has been described to us, is that correct?
Oh.
Thank you very much.
I can see the nods, okay.
All right. Next item on our agenda, item 1C, is to take action on an appoint, on an appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Spillsberry, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is the current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Summers?
I need to correct for a prior mistake, because I was admonished for not bringing up that we started our first new elect, all-electric fire truck. This one is all-electric.
Thank you.
It happens to be in my district, it happens to service my neighborhood, so there we are. I've had the opportunity to, the privilege of being part of the fire service for over 30 years, drove fire trucks, which is a lot of fun, for over 20 years, and it was very interesting to present this truck to the neighborhood while it was running. If you've ever been on a fire scene or close to a fire scene, it is very loud, very dirty.
What?
What?
There might be some hearing loss involved, right?
Two of us have tinnitus, I think, from, from being on fire trucks. It's gonna be a very interesting experience, and I, I can tell you that one of the, the key engineers at that fire station, and as firefighters, we tend to be very, very skeptical people, we hate change. Yeah, yeah, it's true. And to, to see a salty engineer, nearly 40 years on the job, push this truck to be in service, says a lot about what those crews think of this truck. Yes, it's, it's, it's more expensive, we know that. If you go out and get a Ford F-150, right now, I think they start around $40,000, and, and the Lightning version, the electrified version of that's probably around $50,000, $60,000, so they are more expensive. But I know that two of us on here have lost friends to cancer, the exposures that we get, we, the firefighters sleep in that building, and to not have the exhaust, the fumes, the exposures, the noise that comes with a typical fire truck, this is absolutely worth looking at for, for the future, the health and welfare of, of our employees as firefighters. So I'm very excited to have this in service, and have it in service in my neighborhood, so get your own.
Please, yes.
Alicia.
Alicia.
This morning.
If you wear name tags, that would be a little...
Councilmember Freeman and I had the pleasure of getting a tour from North Grumman, their Mesa site office. They have about 260 employees in the city of Mesa, and it straddles our districts. They have an administrative office in Councilmember Freeman's, Freeman's district, and the actual manufacturing in my district, they manufacture the Bushmaster cannon, which is an important weapon for not only the US military, but several of our allies internationally. We got to see it fire too, one of them, it was really impressive. Anyway, I wanted to say thank you to Jennifer Zahnemfeld, who chairs our, who's the site manager over there, she also chairs our Economic Development Advisory Board, and her team for that great tour. I don't know if you had anything to add.
Well, I was looking for the smell of gunpowder, but it wasn't there.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't, but, tagging on to Councilmember Summers, this January 30th is our Mesa Fallen, Fallen Firefighter Memorial. I think it starts at 9:00 AM, if I'm right, 9:00 AM, so if you could put that on your calendar.
We'll get it out.
Fallen...
The Fallen Firefighter Memorial for, over at Memorial Park here at Second Street, January 30th. January 30th.
Okay.
Just letting you know that, so that's all I have, thank you.
Great.
On Tuesday, we, Mesa was proud to host the East Valley Breakfast with the Governor, and I just always am proud when we host things like that, because it brings people from all over the East Valley, all the mayors and councils and businesses, all, all of the people come for it, for her to do her state-of-the-state address. And then yesterday, I had the great opportunity to speak at a meeting of the East Mesa AAUW, which is the American Association of University Women. They are a group that advocates for women's educational, social, economic, and political advancement, and they provide scholarships to women who are trying to return to or complete their education, and they've actually been in Mesa since 1989, and I had never heard of them, and it was a great opportunity, and spoke about my experiences on council and what we're doing as a city, and want to thank them for having me out to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
Oh, I think, the city manager, I think you'll add on, about Monday, we're having our MLK parade in downtown Mesa. There'll be some closures, so if you live in downtown, please check social, and there's some signs up, there'll be some closures about that. But we are the only MLK parade, is that correct, in the valley?
There's a, there's a, there's a march, there's a walk in downtown Phoenix, but we're the only parade.
We're the East Valley, East Valley MLK.
Well, in, in the Phoenix region, it's the only parade, there is a march.
Oh, I see, they have a march. Well, anyway.
Ours has a band.
Yeah, we have a band, so come to downtown Mesa on Monday, and city manager...
Yeah, so let's just say that way, if you don't mind, so from 11 to 4:00 PM. So invite everybody, and then there's the festival with the food and vendors at the plaza right after the parade, so.
Parade's at 11.
Parade's at 11.
On the parade, I think the grand marshals of the parade are the delegation that went to Denver that came back with the All-America City Award, so that will be another opportunity to, to celebrate that as well, won't it? Thank you, anything else? I'll just say, this is not looking backward but forward, I, I'll be at the, at the parade on, on Monday, but Tuesday, I'm looking forward to, I'm traveling back to the frozen northeast part of the United States to participate in the US Conference of Mayors from Tuesday to Friday of next week, so I apologize, I'll be absent from our meeting next Thursday morning. But the reason I'm, I'm mentioning it is, I think this is a particularly interesting time to go back, I, I have, I chair the Immigration Reform Task Force, and I think we all know... I have, I chair the Immigration Reform Task Force, and I think we all know how important that issue is right now, particularly for cities that are facing street releases during the migrant surge, and so there's a lot of cities that are very interested in interacting with the federal government on that topic, and I am looking forward to having the opportunity to chair those meetings and to work with mayors on that topic. Also, at this conference, I've been asked to speak on our response to electric vehicle issue. As you know, I enjoy serving on the National Electric Vehicle Working Group, so there will be a lot of discussion, and I'm looking forward to sharing with the country what we're doing in Mesa. On that topic, I think it's not premature to pat ourselves on the back for the fact that yesterday, there was an announcement that Mesa's receiving a $12 million grant from the federal government to help with electric vehicle charging stations in our community. Far and away, the largest grant in the state of Arizona, one of the largest grants for a city in the United States. So, I think we're gonna continue to be the focus of a lot of attention when it comes to how our city is responding to the opportunities to take advantage of electric vehicle in our fleets and private use as well. So, thank you. I'll give a more detailed report when I get back, but I'm, again, I'm looking forward to doing that. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us before we look to Mr. Brady for our schedule of future meetings?
We will still meet with the mayor out of town. That's my announcement. For Thursday, January 18th, we will have a study session on Thursday. So, we'll see you then. We mentioned the MLK parade. The Asian Festival is also having their Asian District, or the Asian Festival this Friday, the 12th, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM at the MCC College, or the Basic Community College, so thank you.
It's Friday and Saturday.
Oh, is it?
In the...
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, Friday and then the 13th, yes, you're right.
Do they have food?
Tons.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, council. That concludes the agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Goforth. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.